Just back on the record for a second, we have retaken the dice after closed session. Want to check with City Attorney Ennis, is there anything to report out?
Thank you Mayor, there is no reportable action.
Great, we will stand in recess for a moment while the council convenes for our meeting. Good evening everyone and welcome to your Laguna Niguel City Council meeting. We are retaking the dice after having been out in closed session. I would like to call it back to order at this time. I'd also ask Maynard Rains from the American Legion Post 281 to come forward for the invocation. And then we will have Daisy Girl Scout Troop 7570, Brownie Girl Scout Troop 6486, and Daisy Girl Scout Troop 6484 to come forward and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If you all would please rise.
Thank you Mayor, please bow your heads as I pray. Dear wise and loving Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here tonight. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings, thank you for life itself and for good health and sustenance that each of us needs to fulfill our aspects in our lives. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you for loving us from your boundless and gracious being. I pray for our Mayor, for our city officials, and in particular for this assembled city council. Grant them the wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of welfare and true needs of our people, a thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony, and personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give wisdom and discernment for what would please you and would benefit those who live and work in our great city of Laguna Niguel. It is in your most blessed name I pray, amen.
Thank you very much.
Color Guard present the colors. Would the Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, and Audience please join in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You all be still, we'll come down and see you for a second.
Audience may be seated.
Well that was fantastic girls, well done. And this is the first blue ones we've had in a long time, so good job. Daisy, so nice to have you all here, thanks for coming. I'm going to give the microphone to each of you and you can just pass it down. If you would tell us your first name and where you go to school and what grade you're in, can you do that? Great, thank you. You want to hold it?
I'm Kaylee and I go to Oxford and I'm in kindergarten.
My name's Harper and I go to Community Roots and I'm in kindergarten.
My name's April and I go to Vea Hill and I'm in first grade.
My name is Anna, I go to Multon Elementary and I'm in second grade.
My name is Johnan and I go to Multon Elementary and I'm in second grade.
My name is Kaylin, I go to Multon Elementary School and I'm in first grade.
My name is Emily and I go to Community Roots. I'm in kindergarten.
Can we get a big hand for that? That's got to be neat. You guys did so well at that, good job. Now we must have some parents here, do we have any troop leaders? Come on up. We won't make you tell us what grade you're in. We're so happy to have you here. On behalf of the City Council and the City of Laguna Niguel, I just wanted to say thank you to, I think I've got three, thank you to our leaders for coming out. I have one of our city challenge coins for our 30th anniversary. Anyone need to give you, just say thank you. Thanks for all you do. You're doing a great job because it turned out great. Do you guys mind if we get a picture? That'd be good, okay. They have lots of photographers, good job. Now who's going to dismiss us? You can use this microphone.
Color Guard dismissed.
That's great, please give them a hand. And for the council, we do have one presentation tonight. Thank you very much. Our presentation this evening is a proclamation from the City Council declaring that April 2019, hey that's now, is the DMV Donate Life California Month. At this time, I'd like to ask Rebecca Clark if she's with us. Cheer, come on up, thank you. One legacy ambassador to come forward for the presentation.
So nice to see you, thank you so much for coming.
Great, thank you. I'll, this says many, many good things, but I just wanted to read you the last part, that on behalf of Laguna Niguel City Council in recognition of National Donate Life Month, do hereby declare April 2019 as DMV Donate Life California and the City of Laguna Niguel and doing so encourage all residents to check yes when applying for renewing their driver's license or ID cards. Thank you very much. Was there something you wanted to tell us about that? Please do.
Well I want to thank you Mayor and the City Council Members for having me here tonight and presenting this proclamation, it means a lot to me and One Legacy that the City of Laguna Niguel is honoring this month. I am a citizen here in Laguna Niguel, so it's even more exciting for me. I kind of, like the Mayor said, we really want to encourage people this month to really think about becoming an organ donor by checking yes at the DMV or going online to sign up. And I kind of want to share my story, it's not necessarily about the pink dot, but it is about organ donation. Six years ago, I donated my kidney to my older son. And it was the most amazing experience of my life. You watch your child struggle with medical conditions his entire life and it was never a doubt in my mind that I wanted to help him. And I wish I had 20 kidneys, should I give him more? But to see what it does for an individual, to give them the gift of life by being an organ donor is, it just, it makes me speechless just to think of how amazing it is. So I encourage you, if you haven't signed up to be a donor at the DMV, go for it. Or if you have some questions, reach out to any Ambassador, One Legacy, Donate Life, we will be more than happy to answer your questions that you may have. And like I said, I've met a lot of people sharing my story, they're sharing, they share their story with me and meeting donor families, recipients, and it's just an amazing process. So again, thank you so much for letting me talk a little bit about it. The one thing that we do have this month to end our Donate Life Month is, One Legacy has a run walk at Cal State Fullerton on Saturday, April 27th. I encourage everybody to go, you can go online and sign up on donatelifoc.org and come join us. There is a bunch of festivities going on. We really highlight donor families, donors, and recipients, and it's a fabulous day. So I encourage you all to make it if you can, but thank you again.
Well thank you very much, and let me give you this proclamation. If you would, hold that, also going to give you a 30th Anniversary Challenge Coin. You don't even have to join the Girl Scouts to do that, so that's good. We wanted to get a picture with you as well, and thank you so much for all you're doing. Thank you so much. Get your hands full, thank you. And that's it for us, so we can go turn back to the dice. All right, this time I'm going to open for public communications. Any person wishing to address the City Council will need to complete and present a gold-colored request to speak form to the City Clerk. These forms are available on the counter, it's located in the back of the council chambers. Please be aware that the time limit will be three minutes for each person to speak, and to allow equal time for speakers, minutes may not be given to another speaker. You may have one person read your statement if you choose to. City Deputy City Clerk Lauer, we have three requests to speak for him, do you have any more? Okay, and some of these are, I can't tell if they want to speak on the CBDG or not, we can do those now if you don't have to wait the whole time, but why don't we just go ahead and have our public communications now? And I will call up the first one, which is Rebecca Rader. Welcome so much. Yeah, thank you, if you would please state your name and address for us.
My name is Rebecca Rader, I'm with CASA of Orange County, which is in Santa Ana, at 1505 Seventeenth Street. And I just came tonight to say thank you for considering us for a grant for CDBG. We, CASA stands for Court Appointed Special Advocates, and we work with the nearly 3,100 children living in foster care in our county. Right here in Laguna Niguel, in a given year, you could have up to 30 or 40 children living in the system. You wouldn't know them from your next door neighbors, they look like normal children, but they've all been removed from their homes because their parents basically cannot take care of them due to abuse neglect. And we're hoping that you'll help us because this, we're a first time applicant, but we're not new to CDBG, and this will help us to increase the amount of care that we're giving to children in your community by about 50%. So last year we served 11 children, we'd be able to go up to 16 or 17 children. And I think even though you'll never meet these children, I can assure you, you'll change the trajectory of their life by having one caring adult in their life who is there for them and will advocate for them in court as well. So thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you so much for being here, thank you for all you do. Our next speaker is Pamela Kowalski. Welcome and thank you.
Hi, thank you.
You had someone else listed here as well.
I did, it's okay, I have it all written down for us.
Fantastic, well thank you so much, if you would please state your name and address.
My name is Pamela Kowalski, our address is 30011 Ivy Glen Drive, Suite Number 109, here in Laguna Niguel.
Great, thank you, welcome.
Of course, thank you. During the school year, we offer homework assistance, various clubs, that include drama, photography, fitness, and children's favorite cooking. We are clearly gearing up for the summer where we offer field trips to various locations such as San Diego Zoo, Knott's Berry Farm, and the Aquarium of the Pacific, to name a few. On a normal school day, the Laguna Niguel Childcare Branch serves up to 1,300 children and the YMCA of Orange County serves close to 4,000 children daily. The grant money that is provided by the city allows us to help low-income families, many that are single parents. We are able to provide a safe nurturing environment so that the parents are able to work without worrying about their child's well-being. The grant money is strictly provided to those families in need in that quality for financial aid. Depending on their income and family circumstances determines whether they receive anywhere from 10% to 50% off their monthly tuition. Without this assistance, these families and single parents have limited to no other means of childcare. We were able to help approximately 140 Laguna Niguel families last year for the entire year with their tuition. This includes school and summer months. Last year as a whole, we provide 240,000 worth of financial aid to low-income families in our area. We offset the remaining funds through our annual YMCA campaign, which raises monthly through family, community, and staff donations. This year, childcare division held its annual overnighter at the Laguna Niguel Family YMCA Branch and re-raised over $18,000. And that went to scholarship funds. Each of our school sites has a goal in that they try to raise, this year Laguna Niguel school sites were able to raise over $60,000. With the funds the City of Laguna Niguel awards us, we are able to help five to six families with 50% off their monthly childcare fees for the whole year, or gives us the flexibility to be able to assist over 140 families throughout the year. This makes a tremendous impact on the families and students that are able to benefit from this. We at the YMCA greatly appreciate all the support we have received from the City of Laguna Niguel. These funds truly have a positive impact on the families, thank you.
Great, thank you so much, and thank you for all you do in our community. Thank you. Our next speaker is Laura Fisher. Welcome back.
Thanks, good evening and thank you for having me. I apologize about my voice, this wonderful bloom we are having is not a good friend to my allergies. We are a hunger and homeless provider here in South Orange County. My address is 29761 Running Deer Lane, so I live right up the hill. Our offices are centrally located in Irvine. Locally, we provided almost 4,000 services to people in Laguna Niguel last year. We assisted people with more than $10,000 worth of rent just in the city. And throughout the county, we were able to help almost 350 homeless people. But I want to share a specific story, so we have one condo that we utilize to house a homeless family here in Laguna Niguel. We were touring condos today, we go through once a month just to make sure that the families are doing okay and what their units look like. And the family that moved in there is a single mom with three young boys. She was fleeing domestic violence, she left a military husband, and things were doing really well with them until one day as he was attempting to hit her, he hit their four-year-old son and broke his arm. And so that was enough that she decided to leave, but unfortunately, they were stationed in Germany at the time, so she stayed until they got back here and then left him. But unfortunately, she is not local, she did not have any family here, and as we think about custody of children, she's not able to leave the state. But in a five-month period that she has been with us, she's gotten rid of all of her credit card debt, she has taken her credit score up 100 points, all of the kids are enrolled, and she has bought herself a new car. She's gainfully employed 40 hours a week. So the programs do work, and it is through the help of all of you and the funding of the city that we're able to help people seek that kind of success. So thank you for your ongoing support.
Thank you so much, and thank you for that story as well. Just want to check, do we have any further requests to speak? Okay, at this time, I'll close public communications. We'll now move on to our consent calendar, items one through nine, and ask my colleagues if there are any items that need to be pulled for discussion. Anything?
Just item number nine.
Item number nine, okay. Any others? With that, I'll ask for a motion to approve the ballot.
Second.
Okay, so it's moved by Mayor Pro Tem Davies, seconded by Councilwoman Genway. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass it unanimously. Number nine, Councilmember Minnagar.
Yes, I just wanted to ask the City Manager, I didn't get the opportunity to ask these questions before because of all the things that are going on. Basically, I wanted to see the disaggregation of 175K that you are proposing for the City Council to ratify.
Certainly sir, so in February, we talked about me coming back for a single time to get an appropriation request to cover all of the expenses associated with our 30th Anniversary Celebration. So as you know, we have had minor expenditures to date that we've absorbed out of other accounts, so we do have included in the back of the staff report what the total cost is in addition to this appropriation request. But what we are seeking is, due to our fabulous revenue performance for the current year, you have excess of $569,000 expected to close this year with, so what we're asking to do is to appropriate approximately 175,000 of that to go towards the 30th Anniversary Activities. And those activities are two extremely large events, with the first one being what the community had requested, and it's an event for all ages within our community. It's a carnival in the summer in August. The tentative dates are 16th, 17th, and 18th. And then the second event is more of a year-end celebration that we haven't really determined the details yet, but it may take the form of like a taste of Laguna Niguel. And then as part of the 30th Anniversary, one of the requests from the Mayor was, let's use this opportunity to plan the upcoming next 30 years. So $25,000 of that would be used to seek an RFP and bring in a strategic plan facilitator to run through workshops with you and members of the public, however you choose to set it up, to develop a strategic plan for the city. So $100,000 for the carnival, $50,000 for the year-end celebration, and $25,000 for the strategic plan.
And I don't want to put you on the spot, with regard to the 25th Anniversary, how much was the allocated budget, do you know?
I'm looking over to see if Ms. Bell remembers what it was.
That's before her time.
I'm sorry, I don't have that information.
I don't think, only Allison was here. But that was in your department, so.
The one thing that we did do is we looked at neighboring cities to see how much they had spent on activities like this. And I know they used Tustin as an example, and I believe it's called the Tustin-Tiller Days, which they host annually, and they spend in excess of $100,000 on that event. I don't know if you have any other numbers from some of the Mission Veahe events?
Okay, very good, thank you.
Unless there's other comments, I will move the item, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so it's moved by the Mayor, it's seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Pass it unanimously. All right, our first discussion item tonight is Public Works Item Number One, and that is the Orange County Transportation Authority Transportation Corridors Agency Project Updates. And I have asked Public Works Director Scott if she would please provide a staff report.
Thank you, good evening Honorable Mayor and Members of the City Council. At the March 5th Council Meeting, it was requested that staff assemble an update of significant transportation improvement efforts within South Orange County by both the Orange County Transportation Authority, commonly referred to as OCTA, and the Transportation Corridor Agencies, commonly referred to as TCA. The report before you this evening is a high-level summary of current and planned construction projects and other transportation programs and initiatives that serve to improve mobility in South Orange County. OCTA, the Orange County Transportation Authority, is responsible for planning, funding, and implementing transit and capital projects serving 34 cities and 3.1 million residents. OCTA is responsible for administering Measure M, Orange County's half-cent sales tax dedicated to funding local transportation improvements. The original Measure M, covering the years of 1990 to 2011, delivered $4 billion worth of transportation improvements to the county. Nearly 70% of Orange County voters renewed the half-cent sales tax in 2006 for another 30 years and launched Measure M II. In 2017, OCTA rebranded Measure M II and they now call the program OC Go. It is expected by the year 2041, when OC Go sunsets, the program will deliver approximately 13.1 billion worth of transportation improvements to the county. Attachment A of your report contains a number of informational exhibits describing OCTA-led projects, and Attachment B offers greater detail into each of the projects and programs. Two programs that I am frequently asked about are the OC Flex Pilot Program and the Status of a Trolley Service. OC Flex is an app-based on-demand rideshare that costs users approximately $5 per day within the limits of the OC Flex area. This program is approximately six months into a one-year pilot and covers a portion of Laguna Niguel. A public update will be provided to the OCTA Board in May, but preliminary feedback indicates the ridership is much higher in the South County Pilot Area than in the North County Pilot Area. Ratings by riders have been high, and OCTA reports the service is frequently utilized for first mile and last mile service from the Laguna Niguel Mission Veahe train station. OCTA anticipates making some adjustments to the OC Flex service model and will provide additional details in the May update to the Board. At the direction of the City Council, Public Works staff is finalizing a resubmital of the Project V-funded trolley program. The application will seek up to $550,000 in Project V funds to implement a local circulator within the City of Laguna Niguel. City staff has met with OCTA on a number of occasions for feedback related to the initiation of the service. The reapplication will be ready for resubmission next week and proposes to implement a trolley service starting in May of 2020. The route will initially be scheduled for summer seasonal service and provide an option for residents to connect to the trolley service routes in Dana Point and Laguna in Dana Point and Laguna Beach. In addition to programs, OCTA has a number of construction projects within South County to alleviate traffic congestion along the I-5 freeway. The 6.5 miles of planned improvements are divided into three separate segments, but generally span from the SR-73 toll road north to El Toro Road. The first segment to start construction is Oso Parkway to Alicia. The remaining segments will start construction in 2020. The projects will add a general-purpose lane to the freeway in both the northbound and the southbound lanes. OCTA has also initiated construction of the San Juan Capistrano Laguna Niguel Passing Siding Rail Improvements. The project is expected to be complete in 2021 and will alleviate delays in the MetroLink service at the MetroLink train station in Laguna Niguel. Lastly, I'd like to highlight a project that your Laguna Niguel city staff regularly and actively participates in. The Traffic Signal Synchronization Program has already re-timed traffic signals along the Paws, Molton, Golden Lantern, and Alicia Parkway. And we plan to also re-time and improve Aliso Creek, Crown Valley, Niguel, and Camino del Albion in the coming years of the program. These projects reduce stops and delays as motors travel along arterial roadways through the city and into adjacent jurisdictions. That concludes my summary report on OCTA. I'm now going to switch agencies and cover the Transportation Corridor Agencies. The Transportation Corridor Agencies, TCA, are two joint power agencies, the Foothill Eastern Transportation Corridor and the San Joaquin Hill Transportation Corridor. They were formed in 1986 to plan, finance, and construct and operate State Route 73, 133, 241, and 261, collectively known as the Toll Roads. The Toll Roads comprise 51 miles or 20% of Orange County's major highway system and conduct 325,000 daily transactions. There are three major construction projects ongoing at TCA within South County. Project details are contained in Attachment C of your report. The signage enhancements project is scheduled to start construction in April 2019 and be completed in April 2020. This project will add enhanced signage throughout the TCA corridor system. The Oso Bridge Project started construction in August 2018 and will be complete in August of 2020 and improves connectivity between the 241 toll road to Los Petronas Parkway at the southernmost end of the toll road. This project is being constructed in collaboration with the county of Orange. Los Petronas Parkway Extension Project was planned in two phases. Phase one was complete in 2018 and added a new four-lane arterial roadway between Oso Parkway to Chiquita Canyon Drive. Phase two, from Chiquita Canyon Drive to Cow Camp Road, is currently under construction. In addition to the active construction projects, TCA is also conducting a South County Traffic Relief Effort Formal Scoping Process and Alternative Screening Study. This effort began in 2016 and has solicited ideas from the public to address traffic congestion in South Orange County. From the public engagement process, an initial 21 ideas and alternatives were further refined to eight alternatives that will be presented to the public for additional input and comment through the project approval environmental document phase. At the conclusion of that phase, a final selected alternative will be advanced to final design and construction. That concludes my summary this evening. Staff recommends that the city council receive and file the report. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Director Scott. I wanted to give an opportunity for the council to add some things in. We are fortunate on this council to have two representatives on each of those. I'll start with Mayor Protem Lori Davies, who is on OCTA board. And we have Councilmember Miniger, who is the chair for TCA. So if you would, Mayor Protem Davies.
Thank you so much for your report. A lot of us don't know, but Measure M, one thing I can tell about being a director is Measure M II, we are a self-help county. And when you look over the map in regards to the state of California, we have the best roads there are. We're one county that actually, when we do get a tax, we take that money and we put it where it needs to go. And you can definitely tell just by the roads and everything like that. The two projects that she talked about through Project V with the trolley, we're excited about that. I'm sure a lot of you see the trolley that's in Dana Point. Same one, Capistrano has one, and then connects also to the Laguna Beach. Our goal is to have one that would probably start at the MetroLink, but it would come straight down and connect. So come summer, the kids can jump on that and head out. So we're excited about having that trolley. And then also the OC Flex. You'll find that we don't have as much ridership when it comes to the buses down here, so we had to come up with an alternative. And that's what the OC Flex is. If you're not familiar with it, you can go and get the app, but it really is great. You only have to be 13. And so unlike Uber, they won't, you have to be 18 to ride it. But it's great for if you have kids and they need to go to a doctor's appointment or something like that. Come summer, if you're working and they need to go somewhere, but it shows you the route, they just use their app. It's $5, and that's for the whole day. Also, if you need to use it to get to a bus, it will cover the cost of the bus as well. So take it, take a look at it. We're really doing a lot of marketing, and down here, it really is doing well. Not so much, they have another pilot program in Westminister and Huntington Beach, and I think they're just finding a different demographic. But here, it's doing really well. So we're trying to support it because we want to keep this going. And my goal is, right now, the furthest it goes is Crown Valley, I'm sorry, excuse me, Golden Lantern and Marina Hills. My goal is to try to see if we can get to go all the way down to Ocean Ranch, because we have a lot of restaurants over there. You've got Trader Joe's, you've got gyms, lots of things that I know a lot of people would like to enjoy. So that's where I'm hoping, when they talk about making adjustment, that we can get them to go maybe a couple miles down further. Thank you.
Great, and I do know that after talking with the seniors this past week, they were very excited by OC Flex. They are using it a lot, and if you ask them, they'd want all of Laguna Niguel covered in that, because I know that some that were in Kite Hill were really interested in using it, and it just happened to be one sliver that wasn't covered by it. Councilwoman Raines.
Quick question on that. So you said it's $5 a day. Is there a limit on how many rides a person can take? And what are the hours of operation?
I think they're pretty good. Is it maybe even 7 o'clock until 10 o'clock? I mean, it's quite a large range.
Yeah, I don't know the exact times, but that's about the range.
And seven days a week.
Okay, thank you.
Great, any other comments on the OCTA part? Let's turn now to TCA, Councilmember Miniger.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, a couple of things. I just wanted to make a couple of clarifications. And the first one is, a lot of people don't realize that there are two sister agencies within TCA. One is San Joaquin Hills Transportation Corridor Agency that I'm honored and humbled to be the chair for the second year in a row. And then there is San, there is Foothill Eastern that it comprises 241, 261, and 133. And a lot of people don't realize that when you sit on the board, sometimes I chair both, and it does rotate, that we, meaning me as the chair, as representative from the city of Laguna Niguel, I cannot vote on any decision-making process or activities with regard to 133, 241, 261, which happens to be the Foothill Eastern. What is the challenge there? Well, there are a couple of alternatives. There are eight pre-selected alternatives that we are going through PAED, you know. You know, we're going through the planning and environmental aspects of those alternatives. And based on strictly engineering merit of any of those eight alternatives, then the consultant's going to present it to the board. Again, not our board, Foothill Eastern. And there is a city by the name of Ciudad San Clemente that a lot of residents are not in tune with the potential extension of 241 toll road that might traverse through their city. Again, no final alignment has been, has been voted, has been ratified by the board of TCA. So if you hear a lot of residents talking about that, well, when I talk to a lot of people, a lot of our residents like the toll system because it has created a lot of convenience. Myself, my wife, and my kids are included in that system that we take, you know, the toll road to get to work, or my wife goes to Huntington Beach, and vice versa. A lot of people in our city use it, by the way. We have a lot of users. Ciudad Laguna Niguel is the number-one toll user of the TCA. So that means a lot of our residents like the convenience, and they pay for use it. There are federal statutes, when I talk about the legal aspect of it, that no agency in America can build a toll road facility unless there is a free parallel roadway to that. So there is a free freeway called I-5 that is free to the public to use. And then if someone wants to use the toll road, obviously, you have to pay for it. So as a matter of clarification and amplification, I just wanted to make sure that I clarified that. So the position of us on the city council would be basically to make decisions with regard to 73 toll road system. And I'll be more than happy to answer any technical, political, or legal questions that you may have, because we go through a lot of those discussions. I have so many meetings at TCA that it absorbs a lot of time there.
Yeah, that was one of the reasons I asked this be on our agenda. I just wanted to make sure that we're kept abreast of all that, because I see a lot of it. There's a lot of social media that goes on, especially about the 241. I don't see as much about our 73. But I just want to make sure that we're up to speed on that and that if you need help from this council, you certainly have it. We'd be happy to give you input on Laguna Niguel issues or whatever. And that goes for both of you, whatever you might need. So thank you very much. Any other comments about the TCA? Any issues there? Okay, great. With that, I'll make a motion that we receive and file that report. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great, thank you. So it's moved by the mayor, seconded by Councilwoman Raines. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, the, the next item is a public hearing for the draft fiscal year 2019-2020 Community Development Block Grant Application. This is a public hearing for that period. And I'm going to ask Catherine Moran, our assistant planner, if she would please provide the staff report.
Thank you and good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. The CDBG program is funded by HUD, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Each year, HUD makes grant funds available to the city to fund local activities and improvements aimed at assisting low and moderate-income and special-need residents. The city then administers these funds through a reimbursement process. The draft action plan before you is a CDBG program requirement which provides details on the city's intended use of the CDBG funds. The city estimates receiving $306,000 for the upcoming 2019-2020 CDBG program year. Up to 15% may be used to fund public service programs, and up to another 20% may be used to cover program administrative costs. The remaining balance may be used to fund economic development programs and capital improvements. On February 26th, the city held a public meeting with the Grants Ad Hoc Committee, composed of Councilmember Miniger and Councilmember Raines. The committee reviewed the service provider applications and staff capital improvement recommendations, received public testimony, and provided funding recommendations for city council consideration. The funding recommendations are listed in Tables 2, 3, and 4 of your agenda report. The committee's recommendations are summarized as followed. Full expenditure of the allotted 15% for public service programs, approximately $45,900 to fund five applicants. These programs will address a wide range of needs within the community. A senior meals-on-wheels program is run by AgeWell Senior Services. Two hunger and homeless prevention programs, run by Family Assistance Ministries and South County Outreach, will work collaboratively to meet the needs of the community. Childcare scholarships for after-school programs will be provided through our local branch of the YMCA, and foster youth will receive court-appointed special advocates through CASA. Cumulatively, these programs aim to assist approximately 1,437 Laguna Niguel residents over the course of the program year. With regard to program administration, funding of Fair Housing Services through the Fair Housing Council of Orange County and CDBG consultant services were recommended, totaling approximately 15% or $39,330 of the total grant allocation, which is significantly below the administrative cap of 20% or $61,000. The remaining balance of $220,770 was recommended for the installation of ADA audible pedestrian push buttons at several priority intersections. The process also, the project also proposes a sidewalk repair program within CDBG-eligible census tracts. The sidewalk repair program primarily focuses within residential neighborhoods near schools. The capital improvement locations are shown as Attachment A of your agenda report. The proposed capital improvements are consistent with past council action regarding use of CDBG funds and are a highly efficient means of utilizing such funds in light of the heightened monitoring and administrative requirements that encumber any project receiving federal grant funding. With regard to process, the draft action plan was released for a 30-day public review on March 21st, and the review period concludes on April 19th. To date, no comments have been received. The purpose of this hearing is to receive any public and council input on the document, with a final version to come back to the council for final approval at the May 7th meeting. Once approved by the council, the action plan will be submitted to HUD for final certification. The city's CDBG consultant and expert, Brandy Adair, is in the audience if you have any highly technical questions. That concludes my presentation.
Great, thank you very much for the presentation. I want to start by thanking Councilmembers Miniger and Raines for their good work on that. I've been on that, it's a very rewarding thing. You leave those meetings feeling very buoyed by how much good is going on in the community. I just want to say thank you to both for doing that, but thank you all really for the people who applied and for those who are giving those services day after day. Is there anyone on the council that has questions about that before I move on? I do need to open public communications. This is a public hearing. We have heard from three of those, and we did that in the beginning. Are there any other requests to speak for, for public hearing? Okay, with that, I will close public hearing on that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd recommend that you incorporate by reference the comments made during the public comments section into this public hearing.
Indeed, thank you, and we are doing so by reference. So thank you very much for that. Any other comments? With that, I have a motion to, to approve public hearing item number one.
I second the motion.
Okay, I didn't move it, but you.
Okay, I'll move it.
So Councilwoman Jenaway moved it, seconded by Councilmember Miniger. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Pass this unanimously. So thank you very much for that. And congratulations, everybody, thank you for that. That'll come back to us for final approval at our next meeting, I suppose. And that concludes our discussion items for tonight. We'll move on to other business and council reports. We will start out with the Economic Development Ad Hoc Committee, and I'll run through that, and if the Mayor Protem has anything she wants to add to that. We met this past week. We had our consultant called the Retail Coach, who is here, who went through the analysis of our sales tax leakage report, and also gave us an update on all the many things that have been going on in town with the development of all the restaurant pads. We are so close to being announced a new one, which you will be very happy about, but we have to hold off just yet. But mostly the restaurant pads are well under process, and we are very, very pleased about what's going in. We are also strategically planning for the ICSE Conference coming up in May. Jonathan Erdunia and I, and I believe the Mayor Protem is going to try to attend, will be attending that. And the purpose of that is to take the information that the Retail Coach has given us about who is in our city, who's leaving our city, and they have unbelievably detailed information in that regard. And then we take that out and extrapolate it into potential retailers who might be interested in Laguna Niguel. We meet with them, we see their booths and things, and hopefully, it will be a very, very good process city. It worked out great last year, and we are intending to even amplify that this year. So with that, unless you have anything else to report? That's it? Okay, let's move on to council reports, and I'll start to my left with Councilwoman Miniger.
Not to go over every meeting, that I attended, just two. The first one is, I was honored to represent 34 cities of Orange County to pick the next president, vice, first vice president and second vice president of Southern California Association of Governments, which is comprised of 191 cities. Officially, on Thursday, I'll be in downtown LA to make the public announcement on that. Tomorrow night, I'll be in downtown LA to interview and make the final decision for the new CEO of Southern California Association of Governments. Again, my role is representative from 34 cities in Orange County to cast a vote on behalf of Orange County. Every county has one vote, so I'll be honored to do that. And then I'll report back. And I presume that it's going to be ratified on Thursday during the regional council meeting, and then through the news media, who's going to be the new CEO and who, and the other elected officials.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, in keeping our focus on economic development, at the ACCOC Legislative Committee meeting last week, we discussed a number of the bills that are up in Sacramento. And there's one that's moving quickly, and that is AB 147. And ACCOC is taking a support, a support position on it and has requested that.
And ACCOC is taking a support position on it, and has requested that cities also send letters, and so I would like our council to send a letter as well. This is in keeping with the policies that we adopted in the past. But what this is, is it would allow California to begin collecting sales tax revenue from the businesses that do not maintain a physical presence in the state. So this is similar to the South Dakota versus Wayfair. And in our letter, in addition to voicing support for this, I think we should also include, I mean, that takes care of the collection, but we also need to look at the distribution. And this bill does not address the distribution. I think there was some concern as like, maybe needing to do it a little piecemeal so it gets through, but we need to be concerned also with the distribution, and that the distribution of the sales tax should go to where the purchaser or the consumer is, not to where the distribution center is. And that's in keeping, if you've ever heard a program or a presentation from a representative from the Board of Equalization, it really is a use tax. It's a tax on the purchaser, but for our convenience, the seller pays it. So I think that, you know, we need to include that in the letter so we know that, you know, there's another step here, and that needs to be taken so that we are sure to get our fair share of the sales tax, because as all communities around our state and around our country are seeing, is that with the prevalence of online sales, the sales tax for the municipalities is going down. I mean, approximately a quarter of our revenue is sales tax, but that has been decreasing. So we need to protect that sales tax base. So I would ask that if we could send a letter, and with the council's support, and I know this is actually something I learned from Mayor Pro Tim Davies last year, is when a letter has all five signatures on it, it perhaps carries a little more weight. So if all of my colleagues are in agreement that we could ask staff to prepare a letter, we do have one, and I have one from another city that give us a head start on that.
Yeah, it's not on the agenda, so we can vote on it, but we can certainly ask that it be prepared, and we can take a look at it next time.
And it can be on consent calendar at your next meeting.
That's right.
Well, but this is also, it is in line with the policy that we passed previously.
So Mayor and council members, we did present to you a legislative platform that identified what our overarching goals were and what legislation we would support or oppose, and you did approve that. So I will double-check with the city attorney, but I believe that gives me the authority to anything consistent with your legislative platform to issue a support or opposition letter.
That's right. We just can't comment on it tonight, but.
Right, it wouldn't be an official vote of the council. The city manager is authorized by that platform, as I understand it, to have the letter prepared.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Also, a huge thank you to our Parks and Rec Department, and our Senior Citizens Committee, and our Parks and Recreation Commission. We had the Second Annual Senior Games for Laguna Nigal. A lot of people out there were having fun, so thank you, Director Giglio, to you and your staff for making sure that went off very smoothly and that everyone had a great time. And then next Tuesday is the Junior Civic Workshop graduation. So this is where we invite electeds from all the different levels throughout the county to come and talk to the middle school students, and then we have certificates, pictures, and my council colleagues will be scooping up ice cream for Ice Cream Sundays for the students. And that is it, Mayor. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Councilwoman Reins.
Thank you so much. I wanted to echo what Councilmember Jenna Way said about the senior games. It was a wonderful opportunity to be engaged, as well as attending the Youth Committee's job and college fair this weekend. That was pretty amazing to see everything that was done there, so thank you for that. On Friday, I actually took a tour of CRNR's Roar plant in Paris, Ohio, with our Public Works Director Jackie Scott, and it was quite amazing to watch and see what is done there. They take our yard waste and our food scraps and 100% recycle them into renewable energy. And our city has joined on that. Service, that's, thank you. I was like, okay, we have joined, so we're one of the cities now that have joined that service through CRNR. There will be a minor adjustment to our fees that we pay, but it's obviously for a very good reason. We're taking that methane gas and turning it into something that's not going into our environment, so that is an amazing thing. And we are state mandated to do that by 2020, so we're ahead of the game, and I will tell you that it was pretty impressive to be there and see that. So thank you, Director Scott, for joining me, and thank you, CRNR, for being ahead of the game. It's the only plant of its kind in the United States, so it's pretty impressive that we're leading the way. The other thing that I wanted to close with today is, I want you to keep this number in mind, 1 in 59. I'm wearing blue today in honor of Autism Awareness Day. This disease affects, disability affects so many families. One in 59 children are born today on the spectrum, and they are 30, two-thirds of kids on the spectrum are more likely to be bullied than any other kid. So I just want to bring awareness to that, and just say that who really needs it is the parents. So reach out and say hello to a parent who has a child on the spectrum. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tim Davies.
Thank you. I attended the League of Cities. They had their committee meeting, and it was kind of nice because it was in Costa Mesa. They never come down here, you know, either we're up in Sacramento or Ontario, so it was nice to be able to visit, just have to do a 15-minute drive there. I serve on the Transportation, Communication, and Public Works, and I think one of the biggest concerns we're having is all the housing bills that are trying to tie them in with transportation, SB 50 and so forth. The League does oppose that, and we also talked about small cell with the FCC, and they have a lot of power, and there's not much we can do when you really get an idea of what these cells look like. They are not small cells. They are, you know, 15, like 25 feet up, so it'll be interesting to see where we go with that. I know there is legislation that they're trying to work with there. And the other item was in regards to having fuel-free cars by 2040 in the state of California. And obviously, one of our biggest concerns are, you know, how are we going to do that? And my concern that I addressed is, you know, how's this going to hit local cities? When you have dealerships, you know, a lot of our revenue is coming from our dealerships. You have mechanics. Who's going to go ahead and give us the funding for charging stations? When it comes to OCTA, a few efficient bus that we have right now that really puts nothing out there in the air is about a half a million dollars. If we go to electric bus, it's 1.5 million per bus. And again, there's, you know, they can go ahead and make legislation like this, but there's no one saying, how are we going to fund this? So we're opposing a lot of that with amendments, and we're hoping that maybe they'll start looking at the concern, the economic concern of trying to go to 2040, but can you imagine your car dealerships not being able to sell anything but electric cars, and they've got stock? And again, to me, that's a nanny state, someone telling us what we're supposed to drive, what we're supposed to eat, and so forth. So, you know, hopefully, a lot of them will come to common sense and realize that, you know, they're kind of pushing something. We're doing a lot in the state, but, you know, you have to also look in way economic and environmental at the same time. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Just a couple of things to, one, I wanted to echo the comment on the exceptional job at College Fair that the Laguna Nigal Youth Committee put on. We had, I don't know the exact number, close to 200 people who came, and many, many colleges and employers, and there are a lot of people here, and a lot of good connections being made, including military and others, and it was just a fantastic event. I want to say thank you for that. Today, I had the pleasure of joining City Manager Ridge and Chief McDaniel to participate in Judge Carter's courtroom in Santa Ana on the homelessness litigation. Not a lot to report there, other than we're still not sued, and we have a, we have a very strong plan in place to handle this part of it. We are monitoring that on behalf of the city, and will continue to do so. So with that, I want to run around the room quickly and see if we have anything. Chief McDaniel.
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thank you.
Great, thank you, Chief. Director Erlinson. Great, thank you. City Attorney Innis.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Your honor, roll. Chief Contreras. Well played, friend. Community Development Director Erdunia.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Great, thank you. Assistant Planner Moran. Anything tonight? All right, great. City Clerk's Office, Juan Alauer. Great, thank you. Director Giglio.
I'm going to speak for all of them tonight. We have the screening of the newly restored 1928 silent film, The Passion of Joan of Arc, coming this Saturday. They're going to be accompanied by a string quartet and chant choir. It's a pretty unique opportunity that we've never done before, so tickets are on sale, $5 pre-sale, $10 at the door. We hope the community will join us at the Annual Children's Bunny Bonanza, which is going to be on Saturday, April 13th, from 9:00 to 12:00 at Chaprosa Park. That is a free event. Save the date for Earth Day. We are taking, on Saturday, April 20th, 8:30 to 11:30. Volunteers six and older are welcome. We do need adults to supervise, anyone six to 12 years old. I'd like to remind the community to check the city website project page for status updates regarding the Crown Valley Park Community Center. They started installing steel today, so pretty soon, we're going to start seeing that building get taller and taller, so it's very exciting. And lastly, the Freedom Committee of Orange County is hosting a unique and moving opportunity in Orange County next week. The Wall That Heals Vietnam Veterans Memorial replica and Mobile Education Center will be in Costa Mesa, April 11th through 14th. It's a half-scale replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Washington, DC, and it's open 24 hours a day. They are looking for volunteers, and we have information for how to do that on our city website. It sounds like a pretty amazing opportunity that's been in 600 different cities across the US since, I think, 1996 is when they first made it, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Deputy City Manager Bell.
Just a quick note, we are hiring for the summer. We are looking for summer recreation leaders, and we will have a group interview on Saturday, April 27th. So we encourage any of you who know someone or who are interested to quickly put in your application so we can consider it. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Director Scott.
Nothing else this evening, thank you.
Great, thanks for your help tonight. And City Manager Ridge.
Just one quick item. I will be attending the John Wayne Town Hall, the airport town hall that's being hosted by Newport Beach Saturday, I believe at 10 to noon.
Great, thank you very much. With that, we are adjourned at exactly 8 o'clock.